Thank you. Okay, good evening everybody. I'd like to welcome you to the March 18th, 2014 Village of Newport's Planning Board meeting. It is 7:02 PM calling the meeting to order. My name is Maurice Whitman. I'm the Chair of the Planning Board. Other members here this evening are Liz Harshol, Michael Zerler, and Richie Stephens. Richard. And our Attorney is George Odenhausen. Our Secretary is Brogan Rose O'Donnell. And we have in the audience tonight our, the village's new Planner, Brenda White, from Chatham County. Is that right?
Georgian, yes.
Chatham County Georgian. Welcome to you. And we also have Mr. Rocco, Tom Rocco, our Village Board Liaison. We have two items on the agenda as well as some draft minutes to approve. The first is a continuation of public hearing PB 1307. And the second is a continuation of a public hearing PB 1306 which is for decks on the Town and Country condominiums. Since those applicants are here this evening, I would like to suggest that we deal with that first. That's a lower number anyhow, so we should do that. So would you folks like to come up here or someone like, or you want to stay there and lay back?
Yeah.
Okay, that's good. We don't want you to, I'll show you a card, let's get out. Once again, will we be able to do the water?
Yes.
Okay, so. What we have here. You just gave me a discussion. We have a resolution. So we have to, okay, we have to open the public hearing first? We have a resolution of resolution, we have a motion.
So moved.
To open the public hearing.
So moved.
Premature motion. Thank you, Rich. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I didn't mention that member John Litten is not here this evening. He sends his regrets and I told him we will miss him and he told me that was touching. Okay, so we have to do seeker and I might have the application here.
Would you get this back from the county, Rick?
Yes, we got, and it said no county impact, right?
Yep.
Yes, I'm looking for the application. Do the seeker thing, okay. Are there any members in the public who wish to speak to this application? Hearing none, may I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oh, I'm sorry, thank you. Very much, very kind of you, okay. I got a little flustered there for now. Okay, so we have here the environmental assessment form for this project. And we're gonna make a determination. Yeah, that was very nice. Okay, so the questions on this form I will read and tell you what we say, what I think and others can sort of think that maybe. First is, will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use planning or zoning regulation? And that would be no. Will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensify the use of the land? No. Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community? A little bit more shade maybe on the. Okay, so no. Will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that cause the establishment of a critical environmental area? No. Will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure? Mass transit biking, walkway? No. Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy? And it fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities? No. Will the proposed action impact existing public private water supplies or wastewater treatment utilities? No. Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic archaeological, architectural or aesthetic resources? No. Will the proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources, wetlands, water bodies, groundwater and so on? No. Will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding or drainage problems? No. Will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health? I would say no, again. That finishes the questions. It looks to me like this should, should be a negative declaration for environmental impacts. May I have a motion to so declare?
So declare.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, I'm gonna check this box that says will not have any significant adverse environmental impacts. While I'm, I'm sorry?
Second box.
Second box. While I'm doing, I'm gonna see if I can write and talk at the same time. For those who are here, this is, I didn't say this at the beginning and I probably should have, but. You can come up here if, if you wish. This is for rebuilding some decks that are on condominiums that were built a long time, how many years ago was it?
30, 80, something.
Yeah, so like 30 years ago or something. And it's really a rather insignificant thing, but the way the law is written, we have to, we've had to go through this process. Today is March 18th, 14.
It didn't dawn on me just now. Why are you only doing these decks? Weren't they all built in the whole complex the same time?
No, they were fire, they were fire inside of the building, they were built in the deck left, later and better. So these are the original ones, okay. And some of them, they are older than mine need to add.
Some of them have already been reinforced with concrete and things like that. These are ones that were spent on, nothing was ever done.
So George, may I? Brogan? That's the seeker determination. Now George, may I please read the resolution? So. This is a resolution of approval for a planning board application PB 1306, Town and Country Condominiums Site Plan Amendment, which as I said is for replacing the decks that are already on the building. I'll cut to the chase and say that it is hereby resolved by the Village of Newport's Planning Board that the proposed site plan amendment affecting buildings 28 to 30 is shown on a five sheet plan set prepared by Ciro Interante Architect PC dated July 13, 2012, was it? Is that right?
Yes.
Last revised September 13, 2013, is hereby approved, subject to payment of all fees and escrow. May I have a second? Yes.
You gave the numbers of the buildings.
Building 28 to 30.
There's also one on the plan that shows building 32.
Right.
Okay, I will amend that.
38.
32.
So it's 28, 29, 30 and 32?
Yeah, yeah. It's spent on the plan. On the site plan. Shows the numbers.
I just checked out the building numbers, just to be sure it's consistent.
Okay.
So that it just says proposed site plan amendment, taking that affecting buildings.
Okay. I will read the revised resolution. It is hereby resolved by the Village of Newport's Planning Board that the proposed site plan amendment as shown on a five sheet plan set prepared by Ciro Interante Architect PC dated July 13, 2012, last revised September 13, 2000, I'm sorry, dated July 13, 2012, if I said that wrong, last revised September 13, 2013, is hereby approved, subject to payment of all fees and escrow. May I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Rich. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Wait, who moved?
I moved in.
Okay.
Can we get two edits anywhere else, causes? Are you ready?
One second, please. Yes.
Michael pointed out, the bottom of page one says 24th, replace 2013.
Yes, it should.
And the first, second line, could you just strike out?
28 to 30.
Yeah, just check it out. Let's check out building.
Replacing a panel of every deck with pole supports.
I think I have 28 to 30.
Right. Okay. Okay. Now this is a draft, so you can reprint this and I will sign it.
Okay.
Okay, I think we're done.
Thank you very much.
You are welcome. It's kind of anticlimactic. It's official.
We also get the date of the letter in there. That's, Brogan? That's quite a list, do you have the date of the letter we got?
Yes, I just put that in.
So you did.
Yeah.
Good to, bye-bye. Okay. We now have an application which is our number PB 1307, which is a site plan and special permit for 46 Church Street, known as Church Street Commons. The applicant's name, I think it's John Johnson, not sure if it's a corporation name, but John Johnson is the owner. It's called Church Street Commons. May I have a motion to open the, reopen the public hearing? We're closing.
So moved.
Thank you, second?
Second.
Thank you, Michael. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so we have a change from the last couple of meetings where we just opened and continued the, the public hearing, in that the applicant did apply to ZDA. We had a kind of application with them for some variances that, some of the variances that we told him to. I'd like to see if there are any members in the public that wish to speak for this item before we just start. Yes, may I?
Well, my name's Beth Dwyer and I moved to 47 Church Street about a year and a half ago with my husband and at the time my one and a half year old daughter, she's, she's almost three now. So, yeah, I wanted to say that I'm really happy that the building department is fully staffed again.
Yeah.
And I'm so excited because it's been months. And I know that they're taking a look at some of the code and they're gonna make some recommendations to the Village Board, just, I don't know why exactly. But I would like to, I've gone to the Village Board and asked for a moratorium on building until that code can be looked at and revised and recommendations can be made and, you know, they can go through the entire process that they need to go through because I think it's really important for Church Street. So that's happening, hopefully. It's on the road, hopefully. And the other thing, and it's not just me, we have a couple other neighbors here today and then a couple of other neighbors who support this but either can't be here and then I think even a few more who feel a little defeated by the whole thing. So they support it, but they're not willing to put any more energy into it at this time. Hopefully it can change their minds. So anyway. Secondly, I think it's really important for people to look at all the buildings that has occurred on Church Street and see how it's impacted the neighborhood because frankly, it's dangerous around there for many reasons. And one of them is traffic. When you go down the street, I have to pull over to let another car go by many times. There's no two-way traffic because you've got parking on both sides. On my side of the street, and I have a picture of this I could show you, is a sidewalk that has no curb and no grass in between the sidewalk and the road. So it's like a sidewalk into the road and cars parked on the sidewalk. So this is not accommodating the amount of people in the area. So we have like a parade of people at night walking down the middle of the street because the sidewalks can't accommodate them. And then, so you've got, you have to part the Red Sea to drive down the street and you've got people who've been drinking and, you know, they're stumbling around a little. I don't want to hit one of them. I mean, it scares me because I don't want to hurt anyone for one thing, but I also don't, you know, want anyone to get hurt. So it's kind of the same thing. So there's that, but there's also, I don't know if anybody took into account the number of dogs that are now in the area because of all the building. There is dog feces from my house in my yard all the way down the street to Front Street. I mean, it's all over the place and it wasn't like that last year.
Yeah.
And then there's, I mean, there's other things too, like, oh, just parking in general, you can't park around there and that's a problem. I know that there have, I've seen people urinating on the sidewalk and I think that that's disgusting. I think it's also a sanitation issue.
True.
Yeah, so we've just got so many people living there now that, oh, the other thing is the noise. I mean, I can't even believe I didn't bring that up first. The noise is so bad that we don't get sleep at night. I mean, we're up either calling the police or looking out the window to see if it's even worth calling the police because if the noise is moving, then it kind of is pointless other than to just document, hey, we're still awake, we're still awake, guess what, we're still awake, guess what, baby's up now and we gotta take care of her and we've had no sleep. But there's people, like George for example, he is a bus driver and he gets up at 5:00 in the morning and, you know, when you've got a party on the street and you're woken up at 2:00 in the morning and you're woken up at 3:00 in the morning and sometimes you call the police and they'll, they'll break up the party, but you've still got all these units in one building, all having parties in the same building, filing out of the building onto the street. So there's increased trash. Right now I've got foddis sitting in my yard that I haven't had a chance to pick up. I've got, you know, sometimes you walk down the street and there's just a pool of vomit there. And that's gross. I bought a beautiful Victorian house to finish restoring. We've ripped out all the asbestos in the basement, replaced the oil tank, or got rid of the oil tank, replaced the boiler. And we're really trying to make it a nice place to live, which it already is a beautiful house, but just to, you know, settle down and raise our kids there and we pay our taxes so they can go to a good school district. None of us can sleep at night, you know? We've had to move our daughter to the smallest room and she's tiny enough for it now, but when we have to move her back to the front of the house, we're gonna be dealing with her being woken up by the noise every night because we are, because we're in the front of the house. And she's woken up occasionally if it's bad. But that particular property, the Church Street Commons, is on a hill, so the noise funnels down.
Yeah.
The driveway and hits our house. And right now the only thing blocking more headlights, because headlights hit half my house, and I'll show you like what the problems are with the headlights because I haven't had a photo, I took of our house over the winter. But the headlights are funneling down the driveway along with the noise and hitting my house. So we're avoiding sleeping on this side of the house. This is directly across the street from John's and this is our next door neighbor. The lights shine and hit all the windows on the side of our house, or illuminate, I should say, and hit the window here and then hit here. So right now we're sleeping in this bedroom. This is our favorite bedroom, but nobody can sleep in it. So we're sleeping over here and, you know, it's just, it's kind of sad because that's not really the way we want it. But if this property at 46 Church Street is allowed to come down for whatever reason, because if they build multifamily units up there and that has to come down, then it's gonna blast my house with headlights and it's gonna blast my house with more noise because there's gonna be nothing to block the noise or the headlights.
Right.
From the house. So there's that issue.
She's 47, yes.
Yeah, 47 Church. What else, driving, um, yeah, well, I was going through some of the old planning board meetings that involved this particular issue and I was, I was actually really happy to see that John said, if this board or the neighbors don't want me to do it, I won't do it.
They want to, right.
Yeah, and I think that's key. I mean, he said that he's willing to not do this project because when you kind of look at what's going on, he wants to demolish buildings, adjust buildings, make modifications, build new buildings, and in the end he only nets 1.3 apartments. In the end, 1.3333, whatever. So we'll go through all this building and jackhammering and things parked in front of our driveway because he can't get them up the yard or up the drive, so, you know, his lumber vehicles will just park there. I can show you another picture of that. And for what? You know, he, he had a chance to build, he chose the way he wanted to do it and now he's putting an undue hardship on himself and on us because he wants to like finagle a few things and it really doesn't net him that much. And that building on the street isn't even up to code, so I'd love to see that building just be up to code. He'll have all his units in there and he'll have the extra bedrooms in his, you know, 16-room house that he created, which I think if he just chooses, like any landlord, you vet your tenants and instead of putting like a sports team in one of those units that, in the dorm style living, you put the French students in there, like the people who want camaraderie, who are all in a French major or the people who are in honor students, you run to those people. I've noticed that the landlords who care and who vet their, their applicants and who hold them to the laws.
Yeah.
Because they don't want it to be a nuisance, they really have success. And so I don't think that reducing that building, the one that's being modified from a duplex to a multifamily is gonna, I don't think it's gonna reduce the noise for one thing because I don't think it's the amount of people per se, I think it's the kind of people. I think that there are some really great students out there. They babysit my kids and I, you know, work with them on women's issues and, and that kind of thing. So it's more about really just, you know, saying, hey, you guys have to be quiet and if you're not quiet, then I'll replace you. And I've seen that work throughout the village.
You've raised many issues, some of which we could do something about, many of which we can't, but I appreciate your input. We are aware of, I would say just about all of the issues, if not in specific, with respect to lights in your bedroom, we've spoken about that. We know that there are lots of problems with this property.
I, you, you know about the lights in my bedroom? Well, I'm asking this.
No, I don't. I just heard from you now, but we've heard from other neighbors about, about intrusion of lights, those from vehicles and from the lights that are on the buildings lighting the area.
And I've looked at those.
So, you know, part of the problem is that this never came to us in the first place.
That's a problem.
That's a big problem. And had it done that, we probably would have had a much better shot at making this a more reasonable project for everybody concerned, but it did not. In the interim, some of the code has been changed. As you've said, our new building inspectors are working to point out some of the other inadequacies in the code and that will be addressed too. Anyhow, we're, we're not gonna take any action to that, I should have said that at the beginning.
Was that?
We're, it means that we're not gonna say yes or no, we're not gonna do anything with this application until the ZDA has heard from us. We have to give a recommendation to the ZDA on, on Mr. Johnson's application to ZDA for variances, both for setback and for, I guess, driveway widths, and I forgot what else. I think you don't even know what to say about that.
We can't do, we can't do the driveway width.
He wanted a density.
We have, we have a whole discussion on. Yeah, there's a lot to discuss here. Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so.
I have a couple more things that I'd like to talk about.
Okay, you know, ordinarily, we, we like to have people speak for five minutes and then give other people a, a chance. I mean, I, I understand you have quite a bit to say and.
Well, other issues, not more of the same.
Okay, go ahead.
Well, also, taking down that house will destroy the integrity of that part of the street where we still have a lot of residents who are homeless and who still want to feel like they live on a street that isn't just a driveway up to a dorm.
Yeah.
So putting a road there is gonna devalue my property and, you know, it won't be as desirable to somebody raising a family, so I'm worried about my property value in addition to it. But also, we like living on a little villagey street with houses rather than, you know, looking up a hill to a complex where lights are just shining down and driving towards us. Let's see what else I have here. Oh, why should we be in a perpetual state of construction? I mean, he knew what he wanted to do and he did it and then apparently he had this other plan, that he stays in the meeting, so I could have, it's in 17, where he states that he always planned to switch this building once the code changed. So he's just setting us up for never being able to have rest in this situation and we can't function like that. I don't want George driving my kids to school with no sleep and I don't think anybody else does. You know, it's, it's stressful and it's, it's very nerve wracking, especially when you have a child who wakes up, you know? You want, you wanna feel good in the morning and I'm sure everybody wants to. So there's that and, you know, have you guys, what do you, what do you think about the net effect of four bedrooms?
This is not the proper form for our third spot. You and I will hear, just take your test.
Okay. Well, it's really just a safety issue and I would really like to see if something has to happen up there, if he is allowed to switch these to multifamily units, if they would explore the ingress egress onto John or Futuro Rock or wherever it may be, so that we can have an entrance up the driveway that currently exists and maybe an exit out the other way. So we're funneling traffic so that there's not a traffic jam in front of the house.
Okay, thank you. I would encourage you to go to the zoning board meetings also where this is gonna be discussed.
I appreciate you letting me continue to speak.
Sure. Anybody else have something to say?
Yeah, I'd like to say a few words about the situation.
George, would you say the name for us, please?
My name's George Walker. I live in 43 Church Street.
Okay.
Almost straight across the land driving board up there. I've lived in my house there since 1978. And it was a nice, quiet, calm street at the time, basically all the other houses around me were, I older folk retired. It was a very nice quiet street and over the years it has just gotten worse. I didn't really know what to do or who to talk to about trying to stop all that, what I call student housing. On my street, there's several of them there now and it's, it's a nightmare. Like my neighbor here said, I have a hard time sleeping at night. I get woken up quite often with foot traffic and a holler and screaming after I've been drinking and all that kind of stuff coming out of there. And I've got this little white house just below, the one big unit that's likewise up there, and they've talked to me quite a bit about the noise and swearing and stuff that comes out of there from the tawny's. They've got a little small girl there that goes to the dudzine school.
They haven't spoken with her.
They don't need that. And I, I just emphasize the same thoughts that was just transmitted here about all the other stuff, the traffic and, basically what I'm trying to say is we don't need any more stuff up there or anguish on our block. It's just, it's just ridiculous. I mean, really ridiculous. I'm waiting for something, a bottle that comes from one of my front windows in a house on night or the car's getting destroyed, which they have been in the past, mirrors have got knocked off. And we call the police all the time to come down and take care of it, but basically they're hands are tied because what can they really do? Who are we gonna arrest? You know, and. You know, and, and as a resident on the street, I can't pick out the different ones, because I'm, I'm getting woken up two, three o'clock, four o'clock in the morning, and I gotta go to work at five. And, uh, it, it's hard to, I was thinking of getting one of those, uh, uh, night vision adult cameras to, to take pictures of everything that goes on out there in the front, maybe I'd have a record of everything there. Uh, but, but I'd like to see there's no more building up in there of any kind. And in the beginning, when John, I talked to, to John about, when he bought that piece of land, what he, what he might do up there would make a small park. He has lied to me every time I've talked to him since about what he's doing up there. He's only gonna do this, he's only gonna do that. You can see what's up there now. I don't like it. I wish there was a way that you could have them take those things down and rebuild. Not only John, but still past it, up on the corner where it goes up into, uh, uh, that's Orchard Heights, I guess, here. And the other one's down the other way, that conglomerate of the, of those, uh, these three, uh, houses, big houses that were put up there, and it seemed like they're right on that corner, and it's, that's loaded with students. And then, and then one, uh, small house, almost like a walk trail going in there, they added up in front of that, more people.
Yep.
And it's, it's just, it's just annoying and frustrating. And I, you know, they, they force just about every resident on our street out. There's only a handful of us left on there, and we gotta put up with all of this nonsense, and I wish there was something in the law that could take care of that.
Okay, thank you, George. And would you like to speak?
Hi, Tessa Killian, fifty-seven Church Street. Um, and part of the problem that everyone here articulated so well is, I think the root of the problem is that the neighborhood of Church Street, or Zoned R3, high-density residential.
That's right.
And, um, if there's any way that could be changed, there's still enough land left that it would be relevant to change it to a different residential area, especially since a lot of the lots are narrow, um, with, with the remaining land. And all these condos and these apartments have been retrofitted into weird flat lots and other lots, so they're squeezed into places where they're not meant to be, um, and it's caused all these problems. One of my concerns is, I've articulated all of them very well, I'm sorry we'll repeat them, but, um, except can the, you know, village sewer of water sustain more building on the block? Um, we are defeated. I, I mean, she pulled me out of this. I was here, e- every zoning board and planning board meeting for a couple years, and, and worked with Michael on that R3 task force, and we are defeated, and a lot of people, people either wanna stay or can't afford to move. These are our homes, these are our primary residence, these are not our businesses, these aren't our homes, what we're talking about. And if the planning board and the ZDA are here to protect everybody, including the people who come to you with petitions, please keep that in mind, that the residents or the primary residents need to be protected as well. So, thank you.
Tessa, I can guarantee you that this is very important to us.
It's very, thank you. It, it is important. Um, and, you know, there's, what, four of us here tonight? I mean, there's...
No, I, I know. I know. W- we are homeowners too. We live on streets, many of us live on streets that have lots of moving noise, and we're aware of the problem, and we know what.
I mean, it's a college town, so some of it's obvious, but, uh, it's, it's the zoning. The zoning really needs to be changed, and anything that could, um, I would be willing to volunteer, again, anything we can do to make that move forward or change, I would be, everybody would be.
Okay, thank you, Tessa. Um, sir, yes, sir?
Yes, I'm Hubert, uh, I live in forty-seven Church Street.
Yes.
I just wanna make you a picture of what it's like to, uh, experience John Johnson's, uh, construction. So this is a, um, you see this picture?
Yeah.
It just happened more than a few times.
I, I forgot to mention that, um, he constantly was having lumber trucks and Home Depot trucks just parking across our driveway. You'll see that this is our car, right here. I know, I'm gonna hold it up. There's a little sign that somebody came at night and put right in our yard, but nobody bothered to inform us that this was going to happen, that they were going to park trucks across. I had a doctor's appointment this day. I woke up in the morning, this was in front of my driveway, this was tearing up the road. You can see multiple vehicles going down the road here. I found out from Kurt that he had illegally shut down the road, put up signs on both ends of the streets, illegally, saying, nobody could go down the road. When I called the building department, um, they called him and said, John, your neighbor needs to get out. And he came to my doorstep and was upset with me, and this is documented in emails to the village. He was very upset with me that I had called the building department, and he told me he couldn't control any of his lumber trucks, that they're just his suppliers, and that he has no control over them whatsoever, and that someday I might need to do something like this, and my neighbors are gonna have to deal with it, which obviously isn't the case. And there's this picture.
Um, this is some additional sewage changes he performed. This was there for months. And, uh, so, we are, that road is already narrow, so just cut that road in half.
This is right in front of our driveway.
So, so imagine parked cars on either side getting around, and this is right across from our driveway, so most of the time it's really hard to get, get out of our driveway. Um, with, and plus, I hear there's gonna be thirty rooms up there?
Thirty-six.
Are thirty-six rooms? So, at twenty-five or twenty-four spots, so the overflow of parking is just gonna be on this road.
And that manhole cover was not cemented down, so every time a car would hit it, which was all the time, it would slam and wake up, that would actually wake up our daughter in her bedroom in that. So, I mean, and there's, there's no way to work, I don't know. I mean, that's what we're, we've dealt with, that's what we don't wanna deal with more. And so lastly, let's just say that John's plan is completely approved for Church Street Commons. Um, then, okay, then there's, what can we do? But that house has to come down first, because the lumber trucks can't get up the driveway, and so they park all over the street unmanned. I would come home and have to lay on my horn until somebody would come down to move the truck, so I could get my car into my driveway. And that happened multiple times, and it was Home Depot, and it was all these other things, so...
Could I just say something?
Quickly, George, yes.
What about, how do we open fire at the park, also? Um, that new driveway that's in there right now, you approved, uh, that they're supposed to be a fire truck. They didn't take into consideration the cars that are parked on the street. Fire truck would never walk that road up that side.
George, it's not approved for us. We asked, I asked for the chief to give us a letter saying that he's okay with the driveway, that it would be safe. He did not give us that in writing.
Or did he?
Oh, no, he did not. And we, we need that before we can go ahead with this. But in the meantime, as I said, there are multiple issues with the application, some of which can be remedied by the ZDA, and that's his next step to, to go there. And before that happens, after we continue the public hearing tonight, uh, we're, we're gonna discuss what our next steps will be with the ZDA. But I thank you all for your, just for...
I was just concerned about, even though there are kids up there and they do what they do, they don't need to lose their life by not being able to get a fire truck, they just take care of it.
Of course, but, but it's a big problem, yes.
Is there more of an acoustic engineer looking at any of the sound issues up there?
I don't know about that. I, I don't know. I mean, there would, there would have to be some review that we did not have the benefit of having done before, because this original project never came to us.
And so is it legally allowed for him to just switch these to all to multifamily?
Well, he has to go through a process, and that's what he came to us for. And we said that, uh, you have to go to ZDA's, because there are issues with the way things are now situated and what you wanna do. So legally allowed, we'll find out what the, uh, what the, what the boards say. Right now, the code has issues with what he wants to do.
And is there...
He has to remedy that.
Is there some sort of process that you guys would go through to make recommendations to John about what he might be able to do to make it better for us? Not what he's asking to do, but, for example, instead of taking down the house, using the ingress egress.
That will be part of the problem, that will be part of the process. But we haven't gotten there yet. There are still some basic issues that have to be dealt with first. But, yes, that, that is almost always what we do with applicants who come to us with, uh, projects that have undue impact on the land or the neighbors or something. So that will happen, yes. Okay, thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
Hang in there. Don't give up. Um, ma'am, I'm sorry?
Continue.
Yeah. We have a motion to continue the public hearing, Phil. Steve Rich.
I'm not moving, I'm not here.
Well, we can, because we're not gonna have the ZDA from them, so let's see what we've got.
And ZDA is...
Hold on a move for a second, huh? Don't be moving on the wall. Okay, so today is the eighteenth. Second meeting of April will be April fifteenth. It's not fortuitous. Now, the ZDA, when is this scheduled for, ZDA?
Uh, the second Tuesday of every month. So they'll be meeting on the eighth, so...
The eighth of April.
April, which gives you guys the first of April to make a recommendation. If you, if the application...
Hasn't been referred to us?
No.
No.
So...
First, it has to be referred to us.
ZDA hasn't referred it to us yet.
We're still waiting for the site plan to be amended.
Right. It's, it's not incomplete application to the...
Okay, so for our purposes for, for tonight, let us continue it until our April fifteenth meeting. We have a motion to do that, please.
I'm moved.
Sandy Rich, second by Mr. Zerlan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
You can always put it on the agenda for some work, action.
Yes.
Without the public, if you need to do the response.
Okay.
But there's another issue here, which is who's gonna do seeker, given environmental review?
Right.
Which we haven't done yet. It could be that this is considered an unlisted action, in which case each board could do its own environmental review. Or one of the boards could say, we wanna do it as a coordinated review, because it's very important, they still want us, and, uh, and then do a lead agency resolution and say, circulate, say, yeah.
Right. What, what I'd like to know, George, with, with all the, um, all the missteps that have happened, both in the original building and, uh, and the inadequacies of the application now, what, what is the logical route to get to something that will be easier for us to deal with in a positive way? So, what, what should we do first? And, yeah.
Well, one problem is that we don't have the application he's made to the zoning board. Because the application we had was to use the narrow street, narrow driveway, leave the building in place, and, and just in the conversion. Now he's applying to tear down the building, put a wider driveway, and, and I guess he's gonna put additional buildings up because of setback variances requested. I don't know, but, but he's taking to the ZDA is no longer what he brought here. So we're out of sync in that sense.
Right.
And, uh, what we need to do is advise him that we need to have an updated application here so that we can coordinate this. I mean, even if he doesn't bring the updated application in now, he'll have to do it eventually, but you can still declare secret lead agency if you wanna do that, to make sure that the planning board has the environmental review, which is normally the case, because you have the whole site plan to look at. They only have two variances to look at, because of zoning board.
Right.
So what I would, if you feel like it, I would do tonight, just a resolution to declare a agency in a coordinated, uh, unlisted action environmental review. I say unlisted unless the street has historic homes, any homes that have been listed by the National Register, which could appear to have been fifty years old.
Well, I tried to get mine listed on eighteen ninety-five, and they heard it was Church Street, they laughed. Um, so, because I guess they knew what was going on in Church Street. But I would like to be listed on the Historic Register. I wanted to restore the home.
Okay, uh, Brenda.
Well, don't think any are listed, none are listed on the National. I'm trying to think of any that are listed locally.
Yeah, it's locally, I'm sorry.
Um... Brenda, what do you think is going on here, and what, what do you think the best way to proceed would be? Do, do you know anything that we don't know about ZDA applications or processes?
Um, as far as the fact that this board has a different application than the other board, uh, and different materials, I think you're right in, in that we need a completed application. We need it to both the boards.
Right.
Um, because you're referring to the ZDA, the ZDA doesn't need to refer back to you and then answer, um...
We didn't actually refer.
Oh, yeah.
We filed the applicant.
Okay.
He made his own application to the zoning board.
My mistake. Okay, then the ZDA has to just get your input anyway, before they make a decision. But, um, right now, we're still waiting for the applicant to give us a completed application, I guess.
And, and so the step to take would be, when that comes here, when, when referral comes here, we need to advise him to update his planning board application, so that we can review the referred application.
Sounds good, yes.
And, and that's, I guess you can do that.
Yes.
Yeah. So that's where we are, but I think we need to lead agency, lead agency resolution tonight.
Okay.
So that the zoning board knows that either they object or they consent, and then they can't take final action until we complete seeker. It, it, what it does is bring the ball back into this court.
Right.
So that you can consider what these people have been saying tonight.
Right.
And make a determination, what mitigations are needed. Well, you can plan it, see what he's planning to do now. It keeps changing.
I have never seen the ZDA do seeker.
They don't usually do it.
Right.
At all.
Right.
They have, that's passed, and they need it to.
Okay.
But it's...
So it's something they've been remiss about, it's not...
Well, that's, that's a different issue. If it's a coordinated review, then they don't have to do it, because it's...
Because we're gonna do it.
Yeah. And I think that's traditionally what happens, because the planning board is sure their petition over, of staying.
Okay, so, is the first step then for someone to make a motion to establish, uh, to say that we wanna do, we wanna do lead agency for a coordinated review for seeker, and then we can discuss the second?
Don't we need an application first? We have an application. Oh, it's, it's inadequate, but...
It's inadequate and not...
We can't wait, what is it? People have, have to move forward.
If we can go on this application, I, I would still move ourselves to lead agency.
Okay, if I have a second for that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All in, any discussion first, sorry?
No, I think it's a great idea.
Can I just say something quick?
Yes.
So, what's going on right now is for an application that is not yet complete for the two variances that John Johnson is giving to the ZDA.
This is where, this is...
Now, we have an application in front of us, so we're declaring...
The original planning board application.
That he has not updated yet.
Of course. That's right.
Right, okay.
So you're gonna have to send a, a letter to the zoning board, saying, the planning board can be lead agency.
Okay.
I'll, I'll give you a sample letter, if you don't have one.
Okay, okay.
And then they have to respond back, which they probably say fine.
Oh, okay, so this is separate from the new application that we just recently resolved?
From the, the application to ZDA, yes.
Okay.
We also get an updated application from, from him to...
Which he wa, his, he does not wanna do until he gets the variances from the ZDA.
Well, you have, the thing is, it's...
It's not gonna work that way.
Planning board has to re, re, do it first. He can't get them to, and we have to do seeker if we do this correctly, before you can get those variances. So he has to come back here and deal with all these issues.
He, he, he seems to have a, I mean, he, he has an idea of how he would like it to proceed, which may not comport to what the code says and the way we, we have to do it.
Okay.
So, that's really irrelevant right now.
Can we, uh, uh, take Helen's question?
As a ZDA member, could I get a point of clarification?
Okay.
Thanks. So, I, I don't quite understand...
You didn't tell me if my hair was messed up. I don't know if I should. But...
Um, are you saying that the ZDA would indeed go ahead with its review of the application that we have, or are you saying that we table any of our actions until the seeker goes through, and then if there are variances required, it comes to the ZDA?
Well, we know there are variances required, and he's a, he's asked for it.
Right.
So you have a job to do in reviewing that application, and you can go ahead and review it. The only thing you can't do is approve the variances unless somebody has done seeker. So you can go ahead for a meeting, two meetings, three meetings, take testimony, consider the pros and cons of the variance, but you can't take the vote until a seeker's done.
And we will be doing the seeker.
Hmm?
And we will be doing a seeker.
Do we sign up on that, or are you...
Well, you'll have to do that at the next meeting, hopefully.
Thank you.
But in addition to process, the zoning board, the first action with regards to the variances, they... they, is that they have to refer back to us before they even begin their review process.
Right. We refer it back to you for seeker?
No, you refer back to us for a recommendation about the variances themselves. And then we have thirty days to give you a response, and at that point, then you can begin the review process.
And that's right.
Now, now, the one thing that I'm unclear, excuse me, I'm the one thing I'm unclear of, George, is, um, they refer to us, we have thirty days to give a recommendation on a plan that is no longer in effect. Now, the plan that we have is homeless, that's what we need to do.
Well, they... Right. We need, we need to update our, our file.
Right.
But what they refer to us should be the whole application that they have. What the zoning board will tend to us will be, should be a referral letter to say, we're referring to you the application for variance, here it is. And that variance application will have whatever setbacks, I know I looked at it as kind of sketching, but, uh, but whatever is completed, they have to get a complete application first.
But the problem is that the ZBA application is not yet complete. So, right now, we wait, we're the ZBA actually.
So, these I know.
Right, because you don't have a completed application. Once the application is complete, it actually needs to be kicked back to this board for your recommendation on your decision.
They're not only decision.
So that they can make their decision, yes, I'm sorry.
So, question, you kind of...
And that has to be done before the public hearing is closed.
We make a recommendation, which they incorporated that all...
On that, all right.
Yes.
Right.
Excuse me, I, I just need some clarification here. That, the way the code is written, I believe, it says that, um, the planning board has to refer the application to, the ZBA has to refer the application to the planning board, um, before the public hearing. I think it just says before public hearing, but ZBA, every meeting, I think, is a public hearing. Um, is it, is it before the public hearing is closed?
No, it's before the public hearing is open.
Okay.
And so the point, the, the idea is that the planning board have thirty days to respond so that its response is in the hands of the ZBA before the hearing opens. But if they have a hearing every meeting, it doesn't really matter. That's not a jurisdictional issue. We have thirty days to respond to, to referral. Once there's a complete application, we get a complete referral, which includes the application itself.
But not necessarily updated site plan?
No, but it'll be in the, the application, the he, we're gonna make sure that what he gives the zoning board is complete, which includes a new site plan.
Yes. Yes.
That'll come back to us, um, for the referral. That's when we get the update.
Part of the argument of the incomplete application was that the site plan that we have doesn't actually have setbacks and numbers on it. So, we need that, we're not gonna do that map. The applicant needs to give us that information.
Right. Okay, so, we've had a discussion, now we can vote. All in favor of the motion for lead agency and coordinator review?
So moved, so moved.
The ayes?
Aye, aye.
Aye, aye, okay, so, four ayes. Okay, so that's our resolution, so you will have to, uh, give that to ZBA.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Rocco.
Yeah. Um, I have referred a citizen concern to the board, but that does not mean that the village board, that does not mean that the village board is now prepared to take up the issue either of moratorium on further development or a change in the code.
Change in the zone.
Change in the zone. So, I would suggest that, uh, if the citizen input to the planning board and to the planner has been sufficient, that you are in a position to make a recommendation to the board, the village board, uh, either concerning the, uh, amount of development in the Church Street area uh, or the, uh, whether the, uh...
R three.
R three zoning is an appropriate designation to have continued in that area. And, and then I believe the village board would be, if not compelled, at least impelled to pick up this issue.
May I have a clarification of what you just said?
Yes.
I think you said that you got a complaint from some people on Church Street.
Correct.
Uh, that has to do with the zoning?
It was very narrow, that was...
With, with, with the zoning and the moratorium.
Yeah.
And you asserted that the planning board has now enough information on which we can base an opinion to the village board.
I'm not saying you have it now.
Unbidden.
I'm saying that you have enough, you have information which is coming to you, and changes in zoning, uh, very often would be moved by a recommendation of the planning.
Yeah.
Rather than, uh, from citizen complaints.
Yes, but the only basis that I have now to even consider this as a planning board item is citizen complaints and testimony of a village board member.
But we...
It's not like we've done a study.
We now also have an investigation by a planner who can, uh, assist in providing additional input to you.
Oh, okay. Do we have that, matter of fact?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, well, you know, I would be happy to entertain this. I don't know what the proper sequence of events would be for us to publish something to give to village board to say, this is our recommendation. Um, I thought that they should say, we got this, what do you think, but is...
That might have been what you said, I just gave them this yesterday.
Okay.
So, I have this as of yesterday that does not tell me that there's any motion...
Right.
Already underway to make any changes or...
And am I correct, or do you want to get something from them first before we do this, or...
Do we have any budget in legal or engineering that would help us to perform the study?
Uh, no, we, we have, what we have is, um, what we have is the word from our mayor that even though the legal budget is for the baseline amount, if we need more than that, I think he called it other lines. There are other lines from which the money is can be obtained. My, my reflection on that to him was, does that mean that we will do what we need to do with respect to our legal opinions and engineering opinions, and you would make sure that that gets paid, he said, yes. Now, we have nothing in writing, we have nothing, I mean, in practice, that is what has happened over the last year or so, when George has had to do work on referrals from ZBA, on other things for which there was no escrow, which exceeded the amount of the retainer, it has been paid out of some line of, I don't know what it was. But it has been paid, and I have every reason to believe that it will continue to be paid. If it doesn't, we, we, we have, we have an issue. But for now, that's the way it's gonna be.
So, may I clarify one other thing?
Please.
Uh, in regard to the question raised by, uh, Mr. Stephens. Uh, nobody has suggested to me that I present this to you.
I understand that.
Because I'm your liaison from the village board.
And we appreciate it.
And because I made that, uh, I gave him a memo yesterday in response to a concern by citizens. Secondly, uh, although, uh, the, the planning board has not recently been, uh, accustomed to either rewriting zoning or making lots of recommendations to the village board about zoning changes, historically, that has happened.
Well, that's our job, it's our job, yes.
Yeah, it comes from the, the planning board to the village board when there were sufficient, uh, concerns that are.
And having a planner on staff is what we need to, to help to attract.
And I agree with that, so I just wanted to make that clear.
Yeah, but I, but, but Tom, my concern, trustee Rocco, my concern was that, um, that this be done in a way that has the proper legal underpinnings, that I, I would hope that something could come from village board saying that the village board agrees that the planning board should give us a recommendation, or, you know, something like that.
Is that, is that asking too much?
Probably. I, I think that what usually happens is that there's an applicant behind this sort of thing.
Yes.
I need a zoning change.
Right.
Makes, does, does it have, does it have the thing of preparing a lot of information, getting information, making a proposal? In this case, there's no applicant here who wants to make a change, but there are citizens who are extremely articulate and who, who know what they want and could probably put together, I call it a petition, but it's just a request letter to the, to the planning board with some backup and some proposal to it, that would say, here's why, all the information you were given today, here's what we need to change, and here's what we propose the change to be. We've already done this, I guess, in some way.
A number of years ago, uh, no, they, not this year, but, but, right, so, I was gonna add that we have a unfinished, um, we did a lot of work with citizens who live in Church Street as well as in the other R three district, which is, um, what I hear in the white and out west, um, West Side Street, and, um, it included homeowners and landlords, and we had a some, we had a series of objectives in that case, um, part of which was to try to address these issues before it got as bad as it has or as things have moved forward with Church Street. Um, we can, you know, we can bring in the information we have from that report and see if that helps to address any of these issues or make it easier for this board or your board to come up with ways to, to meet their concerns. Um, it is, these concerns are, were relevant then, are even more relevant now, but there were some counter concerns by some of the landlords that may or may not still be relevant, but some of them might, and so we should ignore those either.
Yeah, I have no doubt that there would be, uh, a countervailing sentiment on the part of people who are landless in this neighborhood, so.
Well, can we get that to read it again?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'll drop it off tomorrow.
She can probably, yeah, maybe shave it up for the planning board.
And one of the interesting things is, is that most of the infill has been done.
Exactly.
This, you know, had this all been enacted back when you guys started talking about it, there was, several of these parcels weren't built on at that time. But now they're built. So, there's not a whole lot of infill that we're willing to change here.
Well, Mr. Johnson, that's some...
Which in some ways might, right, but in some ways this might make it, that might make it easier, I think, to move forward with the concerns of the people who's up there tonight, I think, which...
Well, I think, I would say one point three unitage determiners was mostly could put in there?
Yeah, and that's, that's the net gain is four bedrooms, which is one three-bedroom, half a duplex plus a random bedroom. So, after all is said and done, we, he ends up with very little, and we end up giving a lot and enduring a lot. Especially if the building doesn't come down first, our street's gonna be just jammed with...
I would imagine, I would have variances bunked, this is the way we built out. I imagine, isn't the way to put the whole building on, but I didn't. Um...
Okay, so, we did vote on the resolution, right, for the lead agency?
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, so, is there anything else that we can or should do tonight? I think we're done, yeah.
I know we adjourned?
No.
Oh, I'm in, so...
Thanks, very, so moved, everybody.
But is, did I say we were done? Did I hear that?
By my done, I meant with this half question, discussion.
I'm from the Sesame Street Generation, man.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Stephens. And thank you again for coming, folks.
Thank you, George.
Yes, thank you.
Good to see you again. Okay, so I have it somewhere. Uh, we have, um, the adoption of draft planning board meeting minutes of March fourth, two thousand fourteen. Does anybody have any corrections? I know George sent you a couple of things.
I already corrected that.
Okay, fine. Are there any other, uh, please?
No, I, I don't have any corrections.
Okay. I have a motion to accept the draft minutes for March fourth, if you can...
So moved.
Right, and second, Mr. Zerlin. This is a pattern here, I know, Mr. Zerlin, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, we are done. I see some new faces in the, uh, audience. You come right to hear our motion to adjourn the meeting.
Oh, no.
It was, it was nice of you to come for that. It's, it's actually the exciting part of the meeting. May I ask, before we do that, while you're here?
Sure, um, my neighbor George Tuckel has sent an email, I guess, requesting to be on the agenda tonight. That make it here, uh, thirty-six Maricopa Lane.
Maricopa Lane?
Yes.
That would be the town, uh, town in the box.
Oh, okay.
Do they need tonight, too?
No, um, I don't think so.
Can I adjourn first?
Yes, uh, may I have, um, we, we voted, do we vote for adjourn?
Yeah.
No, I'm not voting, it's only embarrassing every time I do it.
No, you, you, you made the motion.
Oh, okay, I know.
And we sent it, huh? Yeah, okay, all in favor of adjourned?
Aye.
Aye, okay.